Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Before we begin, I'd like to share a few notes about our meeting format. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is being held in person as well as online. So Commissioners, the planning department staff, and members of the public are attending in the Wheat Ridge City Hall as well as by way of the Zoom platform on the Wheat Ridge City Zoom account. In addition to online via Zoom, we are also broadcasting this meeting on Channel 8 and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. So if you are interested in speaking in tonight's meeting online, please raise your hand on Zoom or on the dial-in telephone call. A Zoom meeting link and the dial-in information can also be found on the WheatRidgeSpeaks.org website. So when it's time for public comment, and there will be three public comment periods tonight, those who wish to comment on our Zoom connection, you can raise your hand. If you are dialing in, you press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute your phone. So if you plan to speak online tonight, please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to speak, we recommend you simply view the meeting by going to Channel 8 or on the WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. So we appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting. We hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. So I'd like to now just call to order the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission meeting for April 21, 2022. So can we go ahead and get a roll call of members? Tammy, please.
Yes. Jonathan Schelke. Jerry DiTulio.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Julian Stern.
Here.
Melissa Antle.
Here.
Will Kerns.
Here.
Daniel Larson.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would all please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our next item is to approve the order of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second, let's call for a vote.
Motion approved, eight to zero.
Great, were there any other corrections or additions for tonight's agenda?
No.
Before, after we called for a vote? But, all right, let's go ahead and move along, and approval of the minutes from our April 7th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 7th?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from our previous meeting.
Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion approved, seven to zero with one Epstein.
Great. The next item on our agenda is the public forum. So we will now open the general interest public forum segment of our agenda. This is the time for any person to speak on a subject that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you plan to speak on an item that's on the agenda for tonight, please wait until that item is called on. And then, again, I know we only have one person at least physically present, we do ask that speakers limit their time to three minutes, and of course, you cannot donate your time. So is there anyone interested in speaking in the general interest portion of the agenda?
No one has signed up in person.
Okay, how about on Zoom, Tammy?
There are two people on Zoom. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, well, with that, I'll go ahead and close the general interest public forum. Okay, our first item tonight is case number WZ-21-08. This is an application filed by Valvoline Instant Oil Change for approval of a specific development plan for an oil change facility at Applewood Village Shopping Center on a property zoned planned commercial development and located at 126 01 West 32nd Avenue. Okay. Can we go ahead and hear the, does staff have a presentation on this case for us?
You may. I am Scott Cutler, I'm a planner with the Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and this is case number WZ-2108, which is a specific development plan for a Valvoline Instant Oil Change Center in the Applewood Village Shopping Center planned commercial development. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file and this digital presentation. Properties within the city Wheat Ridge and all appropriate notification posting requirements have been met, therefore Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. This is a 2020 aerial view of the property, which is outlined in red, and it's located at the south end of the Applewood Village Shopping Center at the northwest corner of 32nd Avenue and Xenon Street, which is between the existing Starbucks and the King Supers Fueling Center. The area is primarily commercial in nature with big box retail further north in the shopping center, and due to the proximity of the interstate off-ramps, there are several auto-oriented businesses in the area. The property's own planned commercial development and is part of the larger Applewood Village Shopping Center, PCD. Surrounding zoning is generally commercial, including the property across 32nd Avenue to the south, and then residential zones are located to the southeast and further south on Xenon Street. The request is for a specific development plan for an oil change center, which is considered minor auto repair by the city code. Minor auto repair is a permitted use in the planned commercial development. Specific development plans are required to go to Planning Commission for approval to confirm that the site design is appropriate and compliant with the requirements of the ODP, and in this case, also the Architectural and Site Design Manual. As part of this request, the city is requiring some improvements to 32nd Avenue, including shifting the sidewalk further north to accommodate a full right turn lane and bike lane. This is the site plan from the SDP. The building location is highlighted in blue, and I'll show the proposed architecture on the next slide. The site connects to the two existing private drives on the east and west, which serve as the main entrances from 32nd Avenue into the shopping center. The site will also add a connection to the north into the existing Applejack parking lot. The plan includes a drive-through oil change building with three bays. Traffic will enter from the east and exit on the west. Additional parking is provided onsite for customers and employees. The new sidewalk will be located on the west side of the site and connect from 32nd Avenue north along the parking area and into the existing sidewalk along Applejack. This will provide an additional direct connection from the public street into the shopping center. The building is required to meet a zero to 20-foot Build 2 requirement along the 32nd Avenue frontage, with at least 40% of that frontage occupied by a building. Due to the position of an existing storm easement in the topography, the applicant has requested a minor modification to this, which would result in an approximately 22-foot setback instead of the required 20-foot setback. Staff supports this modification as the building still meets the intent of addressing the street by having a direct sidewalk connection to the building and creating an additional pergola along the frontage to help meet the required 40% coverage, and not having any parking or travel lanes between the building and the street. The existing easements and slope make the 20-foot requirement very difficult to meet. This is the proposed architecture for the site, and building design is subject to the standards within the city's Architectural and Site Design Manual. Facing 32nd Avenue is at the top. All elevations are provided in the SDP, which is included in the staff report. The ASDM requires enhanced materials, which include brick and stone. It also requires transparency, which is accomplished on this elevation by the large spandrel glazing. The Build 2 requirements along 32nd Avenue is partially met by the pergolas on each side of the building, which also serve to help screen the parking and queuing areas. Brakes and the pergola are provided to allow customer and employee access through. The west elevation is shown at the bottom and is similar to the east elevation. The roll-up doors are glass, and these side elevations also contain additional detail, including brick and stone. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, and also completed an internal review. There are no remaining comments on this specific development plan. Construction documents are currently under review by the Engineering Division, which include the onsite construction as well as the required improvements to the 32nd Avenue right-of-way. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius, sorry, property owners and residents within a 600-foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge Speaks will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and entered into the public record, and we did receive a couple of comments, and I've attempted to address some of the questions that they posed in my presentation and also in the staff report. Ultimately, staff has concluded that the request is consistent with the purpose of a planned development. The oil change use is a permitted use on the property. All responding agencies have indicated that they can serve the property. The SDP is in compliance with the standards set forth in the ODP and the Architectural and Site Design Manual. For all of those reasons, we are recommending approval of the request, which would be the only and final vote on this project. Kent Lupton of Valvoline is on Zoom, and will have a short presentation as well.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, something just happened to my system, but it looks like we're okay now. So Scott, right after you said my name, I lost you. So is it time for me to do the presentation, I'm guessing?
It is, yes.
Okay, so for the record, my name is Kent Lupton. I am a project manager for Valvoline Corporation, and I will go ahead and share my screen here. Can you see the screen?
We can, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. So I also want to say thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners, to give you this presentation. I won't take long, but I thought it would be nice to let you guys know kind of a little, in a snapshot, who Valvoline is and what we're all about. So Valvoline Instant Oil Change started back in 1986. However, we've just really kind of started kicking things in gear over the last seven to 10 years. We have over 700 stay-in-car oil change locations, as well as a little over 700 franchise locations throughout the United States. Our mission is to provide quick, easy, trusted oil changes and preventive maintenance with speed and precision, and get customers back on the road quickly and safely. We have done surveys, and the last survey we did, we surveyed 250,000 clients, and they gave us a 4.6 rating. Valvoline is very much green-conscious. We are committed to our social responsibility in being a good partner to communities. 100% of the materials that we generate in our facilities are recycled, and they're recycled by us. There are no in-ground storage tanks. Each door is a minimal energy and water usage building. Exterior lighting, all lighting is LED. It's very minimal, it's not intrusive. The building contains a full basement that is enclosed with a liquid-proof membrane. Most buildings are designed to keep fluids out. Our building is designed to keep fluids in. All water exiting the building is passed through an oil-water separator. The one air compressor that we do have for tire rotations is in a sound deadening room. You really can't hardly hear it at all. And all of our landscaping is professionally maintained. The way we do business, and this is, I added a little snapshot of the elevation here, as Scott did, and I have elevations later on in the presentation, I just thought I'd go ahead and add this here, but typically, our business hours are eight to seven Monday through Friday, nine to six on Saturday, and limited on Sunday. There's no appointments needed, there's no drop-offs, nobody ever stays overnight. You simply enter the building and get your oil change done within 15 minutes. Typically, there's one vehicle about every 15 minutes, about 46 vehicles per day on a national average. Some centers are more, some centers are less. Like I said before, no overnight parking nor outdoor storage. There's a limited delivery schedule during business hours only. There's no tractor-trailers. The delivery vehicles are typically 26-foot straight trucks, and the oil is delivered through the side of the building, through different potholes or portholes, but there's no old-fashioned barrel deliveries. Like I said before, there's no barrels outside the building or inside the building. Everything is down in the basement in metal containers. Recycling refuse pickup is once a week during business hours. All dumpster enclosures finishes matches the building. So the services that we offer are, real quickly, the oil change is 90-plus percent of our business, and it typically is 15 to 20 minutes. I've got my oil changed done many times at the centers here in Arizona where I live, and they are definitely 15 to 20 minutes. We also do transmission fluids, radiator fluid, headlight and taillight replacement, air filter replacement, fuel system cleaning, serpentine belt, battery replacement, air conditioning system recharging. We do tire rotation. Tire rotation is about 2% of our business, so on average, it's probably between 15 and 25 cars a month. The differential fluid replacement, windshield wiper. There is zero exhaust, tire, brake, or paint sales or services in any of our buildings. The difference with us is that you stay in the comfort of your vehicle when you're inside our building. It takes, again, 15 minutes. Valvoline has what we call a car cam. It allows the customer to see through video all around their vehicle and everything that any technician is doing to their vehicle. The technicians go through 270 hours of training. There's an 18-point maintenance check free with every oil change. When a building opens, there are seven full-time and three part-time positions upon the opening. So here, real quick, it looks a little bit different than the one Scott showed you, but this is basically the site plan, and it also includes the roadway section there. And then, these are our elevations. I went ahead and added some black-and-white elevations that Haley supplied to me, and so these are the elevations. Of course, the elevations are probably going to change a little bit so that we can, when we go through building review, we can better match the already existing buildings, particularly Starbucks. So we'll work through the review process on that, and that is it. I thank you for your time, and I will stop sharing here. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those right now.
Thanks, Kent. And for the Commissioner's knowledge, we do have someone from the applicant team here as well for questions.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Let's go ahead and see if there are any questions from the Commissioners. Commissioner Disney, do you have any questions for either staff or the applicant?
I have a couple of questions for staff, which pertain to traffic flow. The lot, as it stands now, has a cut-through to it that people utilize trying to get to the Starbucks. And I see that there is kind of a similar flow in the SDP. Is there any concern about old habits die hard, people cutting through the property to get over to Starbucks?
That's actually kind of the intent of the design. So the entire shopping center has a blanket access easement across it, which allows cross-access between different roadways. And I believe that road entrance on the west side was designed to align better with that, either the Starbucks, one of the ones to the north that goes to the Chili's area. So it would line up better than what's out there today.
Okay. And then, my second question pertains to the comment that we received from the resident on Xenon about being able to turn left and right onto 32nd, because I guess now it's a dead end and they can't turn left. Is there anything changed with that?
Joining us tonight is Mark Westberg from our Engineering Division. The configuration that's out there.
Yes, so when we added the traffic signal several years ago, we were really struggling because Xenon doesn't line up with the entrance to the shopping center well at all. And so we really struggled with how to make that work and still get the traffic that we needed. We had a neighborhood meeting with some folks, and we'd received some comments from some folks on Xenon. I don't know if those folks were all still there or not, but back in the day, we received several comments from them complaining about cut-through traffic coming from Youngfield to get to 32nd and avoiding the light. So they would turn on the street south of there, they would turn up Xenon, reportedly traveling very quickly, and then turning right to get on 32nd. And so we had a lot of comments, complaints from them. During the neighborhood meeting, we had, every person that showed up at that meeting, except the person not on Xenon, was in favor of blocking the exit from Xenon. The advantages from a traffic standpoint was that they still wanted to be able to turn off of 32nd and turn right into Xenon, because that wasn't where all the other people were driving. They wanted to block the traffic from turning right out of Xenon onto 32nd. What it did for us is it allowed us to build this little sort of bulb out there and put the signal pole there, and not have to deal with that exiting traffic from Xenon onto 32nd, and it really simplified the traffic signal layout, and it really simplified the traffic signal timing. I know the person had commented about getting a little bit of right-of-way for a roundabout. We've got about 90 feet of right-of-way on 32nd today, and with what they're going to be dedicating. To do a roundabout on a four-lane, five-lane road like this takes more like 150 at least feet of right-of-way, if not 180 feet of right-of-way. I just looked at several roundabouts, I know that exist, and measured them really quickly here tonight, and that's the amount of room that's needed for those. So it's not on a four-lane roadway or five-lane roadway like 32nd, because roundabouts are big. So we'd either take almost all of the Valvoline site, or both of the residential building and the office building on the south side, if we shifted it one way or the other, or we take half of everything in order to fit a roundabout. So a roundabout is not practical at this location without a lot of extra right-of-way.
So I understand. So what you're telling me is, it stands now, you cannot turn left or right from Xenon onto 32nd?
You cannot exit Xenon onto 32nd in any way unless you drive out the entry lane.
Okay.
We did build that little bulb out such that fire could turn in there, coming from the east, because their fire stations are east of here that they've responded with. And so we did design it so that they could pull in, and if they had to, they could pull out, but they've got lights and things to moderate the traffic and manage that for them. But as we were looking at the traffic signal timing to try to have Xenon still be functional, it just was impossible to get any kind of capacity on 32nd, because you have to do what's called split-phase timing. We can let the folks exit the shopping center, and then we can let the folks exit Xenon. You can't do both at the same time. And so it eats up a lot of your two-minute cycle you've got on your signal to do all those changes. And so it made the signal operations work a lot better for 32nd and for the shopping center by excluding that out from Xenon. And again, at the time, the neighbors that showed up at the meeting were very supportive of that change.
Thank you.
Great, Commissioner Stern, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Kerns, any questions?
Quick question for the applicant. How many cars can queue at each bay? So what kind of capacity are we talking about for people waiting to get into the garage?
So typically, we have, like I mentioned before, we have about 46 cars on average nationally per day. That's about one car every 15 minutes. We allow for a three-car stack is a pretty typical, sometimes depending on the site, where we're less, sometimes we're more, but in this case, I believe it is a three-car stack per each bay. So that's nine cars in total.
Great, that's all I had, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Larson, any questions?
Yes, thank you. This is a follow-up for staff. If you live on Xenon and you want to go east, how do you get out of the neighborhood?
If you would drive down and reach the south, like 31st or 32nd, and you can turn either way on that street to then travel up on the other streets to get to 32nd.
Okay.
If you want to go west, I would drive on the other street to get up or to go on the turn and to go west. It's almost impossible to turn left out of those two streets at the same time. So if you hit on the other street, you can come to 32nd. If you go right, any of those, those south streets get you up to 32nd and you're tied out.
The next street to the east would be which?
The block is only 600 feet long. The next street to the east is Wright Court, and then Wright Street, and then Ward. It's actually a pretty good connected grid in that area, which is part of the reason why the redesign worked so well.
So any one of those can get you back out to 32nd or east?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Next question is for the applicant, please. Questions about fluid storage. You did mention that the fluid, the oil and other fluids that you use every day are not delivered by a semi, and I think that's most appreciated. The deliveries are made by a straight truck, but what sort of storage do you have for the clean fluids and then for the used?
So the storage is down in the basement. We have metal box storage for the oil. We have several different, each one is between 200 to 500-gallon storage. And then for windshield wiper, windshield wiper fluid, radiator fluid, and that type of thing, there are cylinder storage containers that are down below as well. All the storage is down in the lower level. The only thing that we have up on the upper level are batteries and air filters and that type of thing. I hope that answered your question.
And then the used fluids?
The used fluids are down in the basement as well, and those are extracted the same way that the fluids are delivered, through piping directly into the truck from the side of the building.
Great, thank you. And if I understand correctly, the way you described the basement area, it is enclosed. In other words, if there was a spill, whatever spilled is not going to go anywhere?
Correct. Our buildings are designed to keep everything inside the building. Nothing, out of all the years we've had buildings in place, we've never had a leakage outside the building.
Okay, and then the dry material disposal, I believe that's a, there's a bin within an enclosure to the within an enclosure to the north of the building?
Correct. The trash enclosure has two different trash bins. One is your typical four to six-yard trash bin and the other is a recycling bin for the filters.
And there's no, no liquids in that area then?
Zero liquids.
Okay. Is that, just so I'm clear on the traffic flow, the driveway is intended to allow people to come off the main entrance from the traffic signal and then pass through to, to the Starbucks?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, was that question for me?
It, it, it doesn't really matter. So i- if the, the oil change facility is closed, you can still pass through?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And do, do a lot of your customers wait outside their cars? Or mostly, do they just wait while the, the service is being done? They wait inside?
So yes, if there is at any time a, maybe there's a rush and we have a couple of three cars stacked, let's say in Bay One, the individuals stay in their car. A employee comes out, takes down their information and then will walk back, put that into the system. That way, when they do drive their vehicle into the bay, they are ready to go and ready to be serviced. They do not get out and walk into the lobby. The only time the lobby is used is with a, a tire rotation, because we have to lift the car to do the tire rotation. So the customer will then go wait in the lobby and the tire rotation typically takes between another 15 and 20 minutes. So it's 15 minutes or so for the oil change, 15 minutes to, for the, for the tire rotation.
So, so if I understand, one of the, one of the three bays then has a, a lift, an automotive lift?
Each, each of the three bays have a small lift.
Okay.
It's attached to the, it's, it slides and is attached to the, the floor opening of the oil, the...
How are the lifts operated? Are they hydraulic or electric?
They're hydraulic.
Okay. Now, more fluids on site, right?
The hydraulic fluid in the system? Yeah, there's, there's hydraulic fluid.
And then finally, I appreciate your including the photometrics, that study. Can you tell me, after the facility is closed, if you close for the day, do the lights stay on all night?
There are a couple of lights on the building that do stay on, yes.
And, and in the parking lot?
I believe there's one, there will be one pole that will have lights on. The lights are reflected down to the point that there is no glare. We, we've done numerous studies and, and have had numerous questions and things brought up. So we're very, very particular about that with our building. There, there won't be any glare of any kind.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
No, thanks.
We have a question for staff. You made a comment about the bike lane.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so there's actually one there now. And the sidewalk is getting pushed essentially two or three feet north to allow for a full-width turn lane in that location, but the bike lane is being preserved all the way through. So it's just, there's not currently a turn lane in front of this property, but there is to the east and there also is to the west. So it, it's essentially allowing for a continuous turn lane along the front edge of the shopping center.
So the bike lane will still be there?
Yes.
Is there any, is it just going to be a striped bike lane? Please.
Yes, it will be, just like what's out there today.
No consideration to any kind of physical barrier?
No, we don't, we don't actually have any of those in Wheat Ridge yet. Not to say we won't get one at some point, but, but today we just have striped bike lanes.
Okay, because that would be a good place to have one.
Yeah, it would just require more real estate to do that. Those, those medians have to be a certain width and everything and that kind of thing. So we, and this bike lane is going to be between the through lane and the, the right turn lane. So it'd be very hard to separate that bike lane.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, I will now begin the hearing for public comment. And I just want to mention that in this hybrid meeting format, we introduce votes in a different way. So if you are making a comment, choosing to testify just in the background, it will be given. Lauren, do we have anyone signed up to speak, either in person or on Zoom?
No one has signed up in person. We do have one person still in the Zoom. And if you're on the Zoom and want to make a comment, if you just use that raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen.
If, if that's Ryan Scott, he's with our design team?
Oh, perfect. Yes, it just says Ryan. That is very likely him. There are no raised hands in Zoom. Thanks, Kent.
You're welcome.
Well, if there is no one signed up to speak, I'll go ahead and open the public forum. Are we ready for a motion or is it going to have a final question?
My question is whether we think that the questions that were raised, any questions raised by the three comments that we received, do they need to be addressed?
I think we've addressed most, but if you can think of one that we haven't, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
I, well, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I believe we have addressed the traffic circle issue and there doesn't appear to be any change in terms of traffic flow. So I suppose that answers that one. That's the only question I can think of right now.
I think the other comment that we received was really about the use of the property and specifically related to the auto-related use. It is a permitted use on the property, so in that case, we don't have the discretion to deny a permitted use other than, I guess the planning commission could choose to deny this SDP. But as far as a permitted use, it is an allowed use and so we can't pick and choose.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, is a motion in order?
Yes. I move to approve case number WZ-21-08. It requests for approval of a specific development plan for a minor auto repair facility on property located at 12601 West 32nd Avenue and Zon Plan Commercial Development, PCD, for the following reasons. The specific development plan is consistent with the purpose of the planned development as stated in Section 26-301 of the Court of Laws. The specific development plan is consistent with the intended purpose of the outlined development plan. The purpose, the proposed uses are consistent with those approved by the outlined development plan. All responding agencies have indicated they can serve the property with improvements installed at developers' expense. The specific development plan is substantial compliance with applicable, applicable standards set forth in the outlined development plan and the city's adopted design amendments.
Is there any more discussion or are we ready for a vote? All right, let's call for a vote.
Motion approved eight to zero.
Great, thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Great. Our next item on the agenda is case number ZOA-22-02. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 8 of the Code of Laws to update the city's floodplain maps and to make conforming amendments. And it looks like we have a presentation from staff on this matter?
We do as soon as I find it.
Okay, while you like, look for that, I'd like to again welcome members of the public to our hearing. It's important that this hearing be conducted in a dignified and civil manner. Our goal always is to create a respectful and friendly atmosphere for public dialogue and we appreciate your help during the, this process. We start all presentations with a presentation from our staff, in some cases, the applicant. After the presentation, we'll invite members of the public to raise their hand and comment during the citizens forum. So with that, are we ready to go ahead and have the staff presentation?
I am and I'm, I'm the staff and the applicant in this case.
Yep. Oh, oh, works perfectly.
Doing double duty. So, so thanks. Some of you I know, some of you I don't know. My name is Mark Westberg. I'm the project supervisor at the City of Wheat Ridge, which basically means I run the design team. One of the other hats I wear, and they're all really big hats because I have a giant head, is I'm the floodplain administrator for the City of Wheat Ridge also. And so that's the role I'm in tonight with all of you. We're gonna, this is a relatively simple thing we're doing tonight, but I just can't help but take the opportunity to talk about floodplains when I get the chance. So I have a fairly short presentation with a little bit of floodplain 101 for those of you that are new to me talking about floodplains. We'll see if some of the people that have heard this before are learning anything new, like, like Lauren. I'm going to see if she learns anything new tonight. So the Sloans Lake, what we call the FAD, stands for Flood Hazard Area Delination. That's basically the name that the Mile High Flood District gives to the local flood maps that they help us do. And when I say they help us do, they do all the heavy lifting. We just show up for meetings occasionally and comment on things. The original Sloans Lake FAD was done in 1977. I was in middle school at the time. The reasons for the update is a lot has changed since 1977. We've got, we've got the four things that are listed there, the updated and better topography. We've got updated calculation methods. The software has changed a lot in, in over 40 years. We've had a lot of development, redevelopment within the watershed and the, a lot of the previous master plan improvements have been completed. So whenever the, the district, I just called them the district tonight, so I don't have to say Mile High Flood District. Whenever they do a FAD, they always produce a master plan also with improvements that would help things to do better, to reduce flood risks on folks. And so we've actually done all the master plan improvements within our jurisdiction and several of the people have done theirs also. The project sponsors were the district, also City, County, Denver, and then the cities, all the cities that are within that, that area, which is Wheat Ridge, Lakewood and Edgewater. And that's the district's new logo. They used to call themselves the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, but when they went to national things, nobody knew who they were because a lot of people have urban drainage and flood control districts. So they changed their branding a few years back to Mile High, not without a little bit of controversy. We started working on the FAD update 39 years after the first one was done in 2016. We updated the hydrology, which is the flows. We updated hydraulics, which is how the water flows once it gets there. And then with those two things, we updated the mapping then. They also looked at additional improvements, which mostly occur in Lakewood and Edgewater. And then Denver's got some downstream. Most of Denver's area is downstream of the lake, so we don't worry about that too much. But the stuff that's on our neighbors to the south, Edgewater and Lakewood, we do care about those folks a lot. And there were no new projects identified in Wheat Ridge. There were several projects identified in the other jurisdictions, one of which was to convert the high school football field in Edgewater into a big detention pond. So that when it rains really heavy, the water would sort of flow in there and it drains out fairly quickly and hopefully none of that happens during a football game. In 2019, we adopted what's called a local flood hazard area. Planning Commission actually acted on that on August 15th and then council adopted that in, in late September. And what we did is we took all the area that was outside of the normal special flood hazard area, which is the FEMA adopted floodplain, and we adopted that as a local flood hazard area. And our goal in that was just to provide protection and information to folks that live within those flood hazard areas that they don't do something that's going to cause them to have higher flood risk or to maybe cause their neighbors to have a higher flood risk. We've actually had several houses that have started construction that fall within this local flood hazard area. And so because we, we had this adopted, we were able to do things like require them to have their finished floor up high enough so it won't get, their building won't get wet when it, when, if we had a hundred-year storm in this part of Wheat Ridge. So those are the things that we did by adopting the local flood hazard area. This is the entire watershed for the Sloans Lake. You can see Sloans Lake kind of right in the middle. And then the South Plate is at the far right of that watershed where all the water flows into. This is the area, the watershed, that, most of the area in watershed that's within Wheat Ridge. And then just for frame of reference, the little arrows pointing where City Hall is, just to give you guys a frame of reference on where all this is. Most of it's east of Wadsworth. There's a little bit west of Wadsworth, up in my neighborhood, current neighborhood. So why do we have floodplains? This is the 101 part, just in case you guys were wondering. Our main goal in having a floodplain is to communicate risk. We want people to know that there's a risk of water being in that location. And most of our floodplains are what, are in what's called the special flood hazard area. That's sort of the industry term for those. But if I tell people special flood hazard area, they don't know I'm talking about. So when I'm talking to people that aren't in the industry, I say floodplain. There's a couple of stats I want to share with you. A lot of people don't think their house will ever flood. If you're in a floodplain, statistically, there's a 26%, which I think is pretty high, chance of it flooding over a 30-year period, which is the period of most people's mortgages. There's a much greater risk of getting wet than there is getting burned. Statistically, it's nine times more likely, if you're in a floodplain, you'll get flooded than you will catch fire, which is a pretty big number. But nobody argues about getting fire insurance, right? But people always argue about whether they have to get flood insurance or not. If, if you're not in the special flood hazard area, are you still at risk? You are. Everyone's at risk. Some are at extremely low risk. City Hall right here is at very, very low risk of getting flooded because we're up on top of the hill, right? But 20% of the claims in Wheat Ridge that we've had have been outside of the special flood hazard area. A third of all disaster systems nationwide is outside the special flood hazard area. So when the 2013 storms hit up north, a whole, the majority of the houses that got hit up there were outside the special flood hazard area. And a lot of it's because, well, the creeks moved, right? So they moved completely out of where that floodplain was. They had to go back and remap all those. But it's a, it's a big deal. Our other big reason for having floodplains is to alert folks that they're at risk, but also to let them know that they should get flood insurance. If your basement gets flooded because water flows in through a window, then that's not going to be covered most often, I mean, a lot of the times, by your normal homeowner's insurance. If a tree falls in your house, knocks a hole in the roof and your house gets wet that way, that's generally covered. But the flooding that comes up and then flows in is not covered by the vast majority of homeowner's policies. So in, in Wheat Ridge, we have three main floodplains. We have Lena Gulch, which is over on the southwest side of town. We have Sloans Lake, which is, which is the one we're talking on, the northeast side of town. And then we have Clear Creek, which sort of runs across our northern part of, of the city. Every single council district has a floodplain in it. The Sloans Lake floodplain, the map floodplain that FEMA adopts is just along 26th Avenue, so it's not very impactful to us, way more impactful to the folks in Edgewater and Lakewood. But, but with that adoption of that local flood hazard, we do extend that sort of protection and alerting upstream to folks. And this is just my little diagram of what a floodplain is, just for those of you that don't know. The floodplain is the whole area that, that we think is going to get wet. The part that's in the middle and sort of that, that lighter yellow color is the floodway. I describe that as a thou shalt not touch zone. We don't want to have much in there, especially houses, because that's where the water's the deepest, where the velocities are highest, the flows are the greatest, the most damage is going to be done. That what they show as the flood fringe is the part that could be filled because the flows are a lot, they're less deep, the velocities are generally slower and sometimes it's just sort of backwater that's flowed up in there. There's not really a lot of flow in those areas. And you can see in the diagram, they actually show that they've built a house in the flood fringe by elevating it up above that base, what we call the base flood elevation. So the previous FEMA firm that we had was June, adopted June 17th, 2003. The one that we're currently using was adopted February 5th in 2014. And when we adopted that D-Firm, so there's a difference there. The firm is the flood insurance rate map. That's what determines if you have to buy flood insurance or not. The D-Firm just means it's a digital version, which is so much easier to use, right? Because we can zoom in on things, we can show people aerials where the floodplain is, how their house sits, all those things. In the old maps, it was this white sheet of paper that your house was about this big on and it was just impossible to do things with. So we are thrilled to have D-Firms now. What we did in 2014 was basically adopt the new maps for Lena Gulch and Clear Creek. The Sloans Lake map at that time hadn't changed yet. And so these are all of our special flood hazard areas. You can see Clear Creek runs through the middle of town. That really awful-looking red-hatched area, that's the floodway. That's the part we don't want anything to be in because the... That's the part we don't want anything to be in, because the water's flowing. And then Lena Gulch starts at, or ends at Clear Creek, and then runs upstream towards Lakewood where Maple Grove Reservoir is. And then the Sloane's Lake, you can see along 26th Avenue is the special flood hazard area. That's the FEMA map floodplain. And then extending up into Wheat Ridge in sort of two branches, two little tributaries, are the local flood hazard areas that we've adopted. So we are part of what's called the National Flood Insurance Program. This was started soon after the maps were all drawn for Wheat Ridge in the 70s. And it allows people to buy insurance through, through a FEMA program, the National Flood Insurance Program. Private insurers would not, at that time, would not insure houses against flooding because they didn't think they could make money at it. And so, so there was nothing available for folks to get flood insurance. And so they started this program in the mid-'70s. In the mid-'80s, they started what's called the community rating system. And that's where communities, based on all the things they're doing, in our case, the regulations and activities that we do, it results in a discount for the folks, because if the community does a lot of things, then it lowers the risk to folks, because they're more aware, and we do things to try to mitigate those, that risk. And so it results in that. We are currently a Class 5. It runs from Class 1 to Class 9. There's only one Class 1 community, they're in California, of course, in the entire country. I think there's a few Class 2s. We have one Class 2 community in, in Colorado, which is Fort Collins. They had people die back in 1997 due to a flood, and that tends to get a lot of attention, and they've done a lot of mitigation and different things up there. There's a prerequisite at Class 4, so a lot of people hit Class 5 and stop. So there's a lot, there's about 160 Class 5 communities in the entire country, and we are, we are one of those. There's only 10 other communities that are Class 5 or better, and Fort Collins is the only one that's better than Class 5. There's nine of us that are, that are Class 5s. What the Class 5 gets is, is all of our residents get a 25% discount on their flood insurance. So if they would normally pay $2,000 a year for flood insurance, because of what we do, they get 20, they get, they only pay $1,500 a year. We've only had 45 claims in Wheat Ridge since 1978, when we joined the National Flood Insurance Program. And in those 45 claims, $97,000 has been paid out. We don't have a lot of claims in Wheat Ridge. So remember that $97,000 number. In 2021, we had 192 flood insurance policies in the city. 200, almost $230,000 in premiums were paid. We are definitely not getting our fair shake of the program, right? We've, we spend, we've been in the program for almost 50 years, so we've spent a lot of money as a, as a community on flood insurance, and we've only been paid $97,000. We have almost $50 million worth of insurance in force, though. So, so these are really encouraging numbers to me as a floodplain minister, because it means a lot of people are taking this seriously or getting the protection they need. And these are just some other statistics. I mentioned the $2,000 number. The average of folks that are in the special flood hazard area, they're paying, they would be paying well more than that if it wasn't for the discount we're getting. They're paying, averaging about $1,600 a year in flood insurance. Some of the people are in there, and they got added in late, and when the remapping was done, so they started much lower, and the rates are ratcheting up over time. And they get a smaller discount with the previous way things are done. And then we actually have 39 people that are not in the floodplain that, that actually have flood insurance. So kudos to those folks for being careful. They probably all have basements, and they've listened to me, warned them about basements. 152 of our policies are single-family residences. So the NFIP is undergoing some changes, and the reason is, is that in the last 50 or so years, they've collected $60 billion in premiums. That sounds like a big number, but what they've paid out is even bigger. They've paid out $96 billion in losses. So they're in the hole, or we're in the hole by $36 billion. They're currently still $20 billion in debt, because the Congress forgave $16 billion of that debt back in 2017. And so part of this goal of the changes they're going through is to make them solvent and sustainable. You can't sustain these things. Now, for decades, the NFIP would sometimes go on the red, and they'd come right back out again, you know, big hurricane hits, they go on the red. But when Hurricane Katrina hit, and then Hurricane Ivan hit, and then Superstorm Sandy hit, it put them in the hole by about $20 billion. And we've had more storms since then that have put them even farther in the hole. And so that's why they're doing the changes to the program. And before 2014, your insurance rate was pretty much, you're in, you're paying about $1,500 a year, you're out, you're paying about $500 a year. That was it. So if you were next to the Gulf Coast, and you got hit every other year by a hurricane, you know, you're paying the same rate as the people here that were just getting a little bit wet. So in 2014, they made some changes. They said, basically, if you were lower, then you paid a higher rate. If you're higher, you pay a higher rate. That seemed to make things a lot more fair. But it resulted in some, some inequities with folks that were doing things, and, and so what they're doing now is they're doing Risk Rating 2.0. They didn't create the first one, 1.0, but now that they're doing a second version, it's called Risk Rating 2.0. And they're calling it Equity in Action. They're trying to make it so that they take into account every possible thing about your house. If I've got a concrete block house, like my old house in Wheat Ridge was, when I get flooded, I'm gonna have less damage than someone who's got a, a basement and, with a, with a crawl space and all those, or, or, you know, wood-framed house with, with sheet rock and all those kind of things. So, so they look at all those things, and, and they just, the change happened on April 1st with people, they get new poli, renewals after April 1st, they're gonna get this new thing. And, you know, before, they would get this little thing that says, here's your rate, and it's gonna go up by about 18% a year. But now, you're gonna get this thing that says, here's your rate, and here's where your max rate's gonna be at some point. And it's gonna go up by 18% a year until it gets there. So that's why we take the floodplain stuff so seriously. This is what's gonna happen in Wheat Ridge with the policies. About 20% are gonna see a little bit of a decrease every month, 60% are gonna see minimal change, and about 10% are gonna see their policies go up by quite a bit every month. And this is how that compares to the national average. So we have a few more folks that are in the increasing by more, and a few less folks in the increasing, decreasing by less, kind of thing. So for the Sloane's Lake, we received what's called a Letter of Final Determination. I did not include that in your package. It's about three pages long. I do this for a living, and I have a hard time understanding what it's trying to tell me to do. So, I just said, we got a letter of final determination back in February. If you want to have it, I can email it to you. And what it says is, six months from then, which is gonna be August 2nd, the new maps become effective. We're obligated, within that six-month period, to adopt these new maps as our official maps, to stay in the NFIP, to keep getting folks the 25% discount that we're getting them. So we had a public meeting back on March 30th. I actually doubled it up with my annual floodplain meeting. We are in Planning Commission tonight, and then we go to council on the two meetings in May to for first and second reading. And that is the end of my floodplain 101 and what we're doing with these maps. And I'm open to any questions you guys have about the, the D-Firm adoption or floodplanes in general.
Yes.
You want me to give you a moment?
No, no, yeah, let's go ahead and.
I talk really fast, so I'm sorry.
No, that, that's okay, it's just, I am still unsure of exactly what we are, what we're changing tonight, what we're adding.
Understood, and I can explain that. Lauren tried to fix my staff report, the first version I wrote. She got really close, but I understand there might still be some confusion. So the only thing that's changing for the city, for us, is that we're re-adopting the floodmaps along Sloane's Lake that are basically in the street and somewhat into people's front yards. It, it, the, the scale is so small that I couldn't create a map to flash up on the screen to show you the difference between last time and this time. They're almost identical, and it's a little bit of encroachment just outside the rider when you people's front yards. No buildings along 26th Avenue are actually impacted on our side of the street by the floodplanes. Now, with the same D-Firm adoption, they're also adopting new maps for Sanderson Gulch and, I think Massey Draw or something, two other, two other drainageways in Lakewood or somewhere else besides Wheat Ridge. And so that's why they're adopting the maps in total, re-adopting the maps in total. So what we'll have now is a new effective date of August 2nd, 2022, for all of our maps, even though the Clear Creek and Lena Gulch ones haven't changed at all yet.
So the cities of Edgewater and Lakewood will be doing the same thing?
They will do the same thing, and actually, every community that's part of the NFIP within Jefferson County, which is quite a few of us, will have to re-adopt the maps, even if they had no change at all within their jurisdiction. They've gotta re-adopt the new maps, the maps with the new effective date.
And by doing so, it allows the city of Wheat Ridge to continue offering the flood insurance discount?
Yes, yes.
Great, I think that, that kind of sums it up. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, it was a little convoluted. She tried really hard to fix it. She did an admirable job, but we, and we got close.
Commissioner Jettulio? Commissioner Shalke?
So are, are you saying that anybody that lives within the red circle area should have flood insurance?
No, so, so that is a general map. The other map that I flashed up, and I can, I can pull it back up here relatively quickly. My recommendation would be that anybody with a basement should have flood insurance. Now, I'm a little bit of a hypocrite with that, because I have a basement, and I don't have flood insurance, but I'm on top of a hill. So, so anybody within the blue and the red shaded area along Clear Creek, anybody within these blue areas along Lena Gulch, and anybody within this blue area that's along 26th, if their buildings are in the floodplain, the map floodplain, they're, and they have a federally backed mortgage, they're required to purchase flood insurance. I recommend, whenever I talk to anybody in those areas, I also tell them they ought to get flood insurance. Now, the folks that are in the local flood hazard area are, they don't have to have that federal requirement to buy flood insurance, but I also, whenever I talk with any of those folks, I recommend they get it, especially if they have a basement, because they're at a higher risk of getting wet than their neighbor who's not in that floodplain, and their normal homeowner's insurance most likely is not gonna cover any damage to that basement. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Commissioner Kearns, any questions?
So are we a Class 5 city because we have such a great floodplain manager, or why, why are we a Class 5 city?
It turns out that I am, trying to think of a more delicate word than the one I normally use, because this is a public forum.
He likes to acquire the points that you have to acquire to obtain the Class 5 rating.
I'm a little bit competitive in that regard, maybe? So, so what, what I did when I, we were Class 7 when I started 14 years ago, and, and our, one of our planners from back in the day, Meredith Record, was the only one managing that, and she managed to get us from a Class 9 up to Class 7, which is really admirable. I just read through the 600-page manual and realized that there's a whole lot more points available here without a lot of extra work on our part, maybe a little bit of extra work on our part. And so, in, in, I don't know, maybe four or five years, I got us up to Class 6, and then a few years ago, we got us up to Class 5. I'm, I'm still very competitive, and, but there, there are some huge prerequisites to become a Class 4. And one of those is you have to have a watershed study of your entire city, and so I'm working on finding funding for that.
Some of the ways, maybe just to answer the question in a more direct way, so educational, like an annual floodplain meeting, or sending mailings out, that requires time and knowledge and dedication, so that's something you've been prioritizing. And then we're lucky in Wheat Ridge, the more property that is publicly owned in floodplain and non-developable, the higher your points, so most of the greenbelt is publicly owned. And we have acquired, over time, a few additional properties that have been significantly flood-prone.
So we've got, we've got over 2,500 points, which is what you need to be a Class 5, and half of those points come from the open space stuff. And that's what Fort Collins has done, too. They purchased a lot of the properties along their drainageways and converted those to open space, which is a tremendous community amenity, just like ours is, but it also greatly reduces the risk of flooding for that community, because there's not a house there to flood anymore. And so we only do it voluntarily. We don't go and condemn people in floodplain properties. So, so we bought two houses on Lena Gulch and removed those houses and the big tennis court fence that was there. So, so we've helped that situation from a practical standpoint. Council on August 4th, sorry, April 4th, actually directed staff to do a project on Lena Gulch, that's about a $3 million project. The district will chip in half of that, to remove the remaining houses from the floodplain by providing a little more capacity next to Lena Gulch, without really impacting the function and the way Lena Gulch looks at it. So it's those kind of things that we do, that when we, when we do those kind of things, we do projects, or we buy houses, or we just have a tremendous amount of our floodplain in, in open space, that we get a lot of points for that. And then there's all the other things that we do. We've adopted some regulations that, that, we adopted them for a good reason, but they also give us more points.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for your dedication, and this, being a Class 5, you said, gets people that are in the floodplain, a discount on their insurance?
In the, in the, before April 1st, it was only the people that are actually in the floodplain, they got the full discount. Now with the Risk Rating 2.0, everyone in the city that gets a flood insurance policy gets that 25%.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for.
I like to say it's one of the few things, it's, it's the only thing I know of, I for sure do, that directly has a positive benefit on what, what people do at their, at their house. I like to think everything I do has a benefit, but this one I know for sure has a positive benefit. So I feel really good about it, if that doesn't come across.
Thanks, Mark.
Commissioner Leo, any questions?
Oh, I don't have any, no.
Commissioner Shalke?
Yeah, just a couple. Does the new map newly add any properties to the?
No.
Okay.
No. When we adopted the maps in 2014, we added like, I don't know, 80 to 100 properties, especially in the Clearvale neighborhood, which is downstream of 44th on the north side of the creek. Some of those properties with the mapping we're working on now will hopefully be removed. And then we've identified a project that's another, you know, three to $4 million project that would remove maybe all the rest of those houses from the floodplain. So we're very excited to look forward to maybe funding that in a future year.
One, one other question. Kind of point system aside, what do you think is the most important, what's kind of like your big thing that you would love to see your community do to improve our resilience to floods?
I, I think the big thing are sort of those, right now, we're doing a pretty good job in a lot of ways. We've got a lot of really good regulations. We've got, Lauren's staff keeps an eye on permits as they come through, and lets me know if one's in a floodplain, so we can alert them that they gotta get a permit. We try to manage what those people do to reduce their risk. But I think the big thing is being able to fund those two mitigation projects. Now, council's already directed us and authorized, you know, get consensus for us to use some funds that we've got right now on hand, the Lena Gulch project. It'll be a few years before we get to it, because there's a lot of process to go through to, to make that happen, and we've gotta get on Mile High Flood District's five-year CIP plan with the project and those kind of things. And those, those houses there, even though it's only 13 houses, it's really important, because those houses all have either garden-level floors or base, full basements. So if they get wet, I mean, just an inch of water coming in a window, they've got a basement full of water, and they've had a, they've got tens of thousands of dollars in damage. So getting those houses out of the floodplain entirely is a huge plus for us. The big thing about the Clearvale, what we call the Clearvale Project for that Clearvale neighborhood, is that several of those houses, and I don't, dozens of those houses are in the floodway, and our floodway regulations are such that thou shalt not build a house in the floodway. Well, if you add on to your house to 51%, or you repair your house by 51%, then you have to bring it up to code. The only way you bring a house in the floodway up to code is you remove the house. So I've got dozens of houses that if they had a fire, or flood damage, or wind damage that damaged them to 51%, I could not let them rebuild. I've not had that happen yet, I'm very, very happy about that. But that's, that's a bad day for me, when I tell someone they can't rebuild their house that they've lived in for 50 years. They would have a vacant lot that could not be sold, because it can be developed. So it's, it's an awful situation. So if, if we're successful with the Clearvale project, and as a minimum, getting all those houses out of the floodway, and maybe even the floodplain, then that would be a tremendous boost to that neighborhood, which is a little bit disadvantaged in a lot of ways, a lot because of the floodplain there, that you, you would likely see a lot more reinvestment in those properties. I've had several people come and say, I want to enclose my carport to make a big dining[1697.08] enclose my carport to make a big dining room, or I want to add on, I want to do these things. And I've said, your house is in the floodway. I can't let you do anything. Or your house is in the floodplain. You can add on, but it's got to be three feet higher than the rest of your house. Well, that's going to be stupid. We've only had one person take us up on that. So those houses being in the floodplains are real hindrance to those folks wanting to reinvest in those properties. So that's, to answer your question, I need money for projects.
Thank you. And I, I'll also say thank you for your dedication. Sorry.
Commissioner Leo, you had a question?
Yes, I think that one I was asked, but I just thought of it when we were talking. What is the distinction between 100-year and 100-year floodplains?
Sure. So the 100-year is the regulatory floodplain. That's the thing that somebody 50 years ago said, this is what we should regulate to, and so that's what we regulate to. There's a 500, we have actually a 500-year mapped floodplain in our system, in our mapping software. But we don't regulate that. It's really advisory. There are a few things that you're not allowed to put in the 500-year floodplain, like hospitals and things like that. So there are a few things that have to stay out because they're considered critical facilities. And so you don't put those even where there's a 0.2% chance of getting wet any given year. With 100-year floodplains, a 1% chance. So, so that's, that's what, what we talk about. Most of the time, we just say the floodplain, and that means the 100-year floodplain.
And that's, and that's the, the 100-year, 50-year floodplain?
Yes. That's in the floodway. So that's that area in the middle. If you remember my little diagram, that area in the middle where the flows are the deepest and the fastest, that's the floodway. We have to keep that open as we can to allow those floods to go through. If we were allowed development in the floodway, then it would impact folks upstream or downstream in a negative way. So, so we take all those things into account when they're, when they're creating the maps. Really, really smart people work on that.
Commissioner Disney, did you have any questions?
I just have one. I saw a comment somebody was making on Facebook, because, you know, everything you read on the internet is true, right? And they said...
That's why I don't look at Facebook at all.
And they said that the new hospital was being built in a floodplain. Is that true?
There is a, there is a piece of the hospital that is in the current floodplain. But we've got new maps coming based on a 30% reduction in flows in the creek. And so the hospital will be out of that future floodplain. And they're allowed to fill in the areas that they're filling in. And, and actually, the, the existing floodplain, the mapping was done back in 2007, and it wasn't adopted until 2014. We hope everything now goes much, much faster. And so that was before Cabela's did a lot of the filling out there. Sorry, I said the C-word. Before a lot of the filling was done out there. And so those areas are actually several feet above the base flood elevation, so they're completely safe from the 100-year flood out there.
I believe they modified the grading, too, to be out of the 500-year, just, which was required, I think, for the certification that the hospital needs. So they're not in the regulated floodplain.
Well, I figure, since they were building, it would probably be taken care of, but...
And even, even the new apartments out there, you know, are in, technically in the mapped floodplain, but they've filled feet above that base flood elevation. So there's, there's really minimal danger, certainly no danger than getting wet during a 100-year flood in Clear Creek. If we have a NOAA event, then that's a whole nother story.
Any other questions from commissioners? Okay. I, I just had one. I guess the last time they were mapped was in '77, and then you did updates in 2007 and 2014?
So the last time Sloane's Lake was mapped was in, was in 1977.
Okay.
Lena Gulch and Clear Creek, I, I believe Clear Creek was remapped in about 2003. Before, I, I started in 2007, so I'm not sure of all the history going back. The maps that were effective when I started were in 2003. Now, sometimes, you know, there may have been a lot of changes in Denver or somewhere else, and so they did a quick remapping thing and re-adopted the maps, even though there were no changes in Wheat Ridge. So I don't know if that happened in 2003 or not. For me, the starting point was the 2003 maps, which was what the whole city had.
Yeah, I guess overall, I'm just curious, is there a standard, just like typically you do a new comp plan within a certain time interval? Is there a standard for, particularly when you're in a rapidly growing, redeveloping community like Wheat Ridge or Denver, isn't there some sort of requirement to update your floodplain maps within a certain interval of time?
I don't know that there's a requirement. I've certainly never heard of one. They did, they did the mapping in 2007 because enough stuff had changed since the last mapping was done that, that they wanted to incorporate. Especially on Lena Gulch, there was a lot of projects that were done on Lena Gulch by the city and by the district back in the day, well before I started, like in the 80s and 80s.
State or federal doesn't have a requirement?
No, because I, I think, you know, even though you've got a lot of development happening around, when they do the hydrology, they really look at that area being pretty well-developed, even if it's fairly vacant right now. And so those flows are pretty high.
So they would like compare it to zoning or...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, no further questions. One more check. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? If not, Lauren, do we have anyone online?
Nope, we did. They did listen for a while, but we do not have anybody online anymore.
Okay, so it looks like we do not have any public comments on these items. So in that case, I'll go ahead and close the citizen forum for this item. Any further discussion before we entertain a motion? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Commissioner, I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Article 8 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws to update the city's floodplain maps and make, and to make conforming amendments.
Great, let's call for a vote.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
For your enthusiasm, as well as all your hard work. All right. While we are done with our cases for the evening, let's go on to new business. Lauren, is there any new business that we should be aware of this evening?
Just a couple of updates tonight. Dates-wise, no meeting on May 5. We will meet on May 19. And that May 19 meeting will be the SDP for a hotel in Clear Creek Crossing, and then an update on the 44th Avenue Suburban Plan. We do also think we'll have the June 2 meeting, but we haven't looked too much further beyond that. A plug for a public meeting that's exactly two months out, but summer schedules fill up. June 21st, we will have a joint public meeting for the 44th Avenue Suburban Plan and for the Affordable Housing Strategy. We'll come to the commission specifically on both topics. But that is our, our joint public meeting. We had really good success when we did the joint meeting for 44th and Let's Talk, so we're trying to piggyback events as much as we can. And then in terms of other project updates, on Monday evening, we met with city council and study session, talked about accessory dwelling units. That was our second time meeting with them in the last several months. And they have given us very helpful, specific direction on a regulatory framework. So we are in ordinance drafting mode to allow ATOs on, in all residential zone districts where there are detached, single-family homes. So we will hopefully bring that ordinance to you in June. And then a CIP project, that's a kind of fun and different for us. 35th Avenue between Sheridan and Teller. It's a segment that's on the Bike Ped Master Plan, and it's a segment that was one of the top recommended action items when we did the Let's Talk program in that neighborhood. And the city has budgeted for the design process, so we are doing some public engagement to figure out sort of what, what do people want. There's a survey that went live on what's up Wheat Ridge. Anybody who lives, drives, uses, walks, sort of goes through that segment, I'd invite you to take the survey. It's open until May 20, I think, so just open, get about a month. And there'll be a park pop-up, and then a meeting at the Active Adult Center. And then just for Let's Talk as well, we were there at council, talking about Let's Talk. We finished the Blitz reports for the Anderson Park and Fruitdale neighborhoods. Those are online. If you haven't read a Blitz report, they're very graphic, so they look like they're long, but they're quick reads. And the project that Mark mentioned tonight, to modify Clear Creek to help out that Clearvale neighborhood that falls in the Anderson Park neighborhood, and that was the top-rated action item in that neighborhood. So what Mark described in terms of being a real challenge for disinvest, disinvestment is real. And I think the, not only the properties who have floodplain impacts and can invest, that's an issue, but the neighbors who then sort of perceive a code enforcement issue because of the disinvestment, you know, it's a, it's a real issue. So it compounds. It's definitely on our radar, you know, in a dream scenario, if we ever revived that Dirt Task Force that came up with a list of, of citywide projects for Bond, that's a really good candidate for something like that. So I would expect you'll hear about that same floodplain project in years to come. No real development updates from me tonight unless you have questions. That's all I had.
Nope. Any questions from anyone? Okay. And no old business?
No old business.
All right. No Luckys or Golds updates, so I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move to adjourn.
Second.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Motion approved.